Behind that.
I understand it, but I wanted in the -- but the problem is, I totally understand that, Jeff, but I also want to be able to put in their contract if they don't avoid, if they don't do their job, that they're gone within a year. And then, you know, I just don't like to give three-year contracts. That's my only opinion. If the council wants to go three years, that's fine.
I just got one thing to say. As far as the hourly thing, how do we know that these guys don't pad the hours and ends up being more than the number that's said here, ninety-four thousand per year?
Well, even at the, if it is ninety-four thousand per year, if it is more than that, it's still a significant difference from the one-fifty-five.
Okay. Alderman Shaki, I think you were next.
Yeah, I'm having a real problem with this. We just let out a brush pickup, outsourced, which wasn't a wash because it was an additional ninety-eight thousand dollars. Here, we're talking about landscaping going out, ninety-four thousand dollars. I don't know what it costs us to do that in-house right now, but it's an awful lot of money to be sending out when we're supposedly hiring five more people just to their, that staff. And then, I hear that we're outsourcing information on the sewers, that some company comes in, and I don't remember ever approving that, but some company comes in to tell us where the sewer is, if it's, if they have to dig down to it. And then, I hear that we have a truck, and we updated that truck. We put in some, at least three, four thousand dollars or more, if I remember correctly, on that truck with the camera in it and everything, and the equipment to find underwater sewers and water lines. But we're having some company from the outside come in and show us where the lines are. And then, I hear that they tell us where it's at, and they dig, and there's no line there, and then we use our own equipment and find the line eight foot over. I don't ever remember outsourcing that. On this landscaping thing, we spent over eight thousand dollars on a large, new grass cutter, and if we try and sell that thing, it's probably worth more than two thousand. So, we just threw away six thousand dollars on top of the ninety-four thousand dollars for outsourcing. We keep seeming to outsource and hiring more people, and I don't understand it, and I have not, I have no information that would justify doing something like this. Just doesn't make sense to me, and I would have to vote no on it.
Mr. Murmice?
I can try to give you, you cover a lot of points, but I can try to give you a breakdown. I know, first off, you started with how much it costs us to do the landscaping. That's a hundred and fifty-five thousand for us to do it in-house.
You know, actually, I'd like to make a motion to table this because I'd like to have Gary come in and explain all of these outsourcing things at one time and understand better what's going on with that.
Well, I do have, I do have a list for you of things, reasons why we're outsourcing work like this, so we can do other services, and I have that list in front of me right now.
But we're adding, you know.
I can't go that in-depth, but I have the list.
Yeah, I'd rather wait until we got Gary here to go into it in depth because, you know, we're in, and the financial times right now aren't the best, and we're, we keep outsourcing, and are we really saving money? You know, we're just adding to the budget all the time, and I don't understand why we should be doing that now. If we're going to do something like this, it should be a time where we have a real good surplus in taxes coming in when we've got some more tax base. But right now, it doesn't seem to be the right time with the economy as it is to be outsourcing so much more. We're talking at least, what, two-hundred thousand? Plus, I don't know what the sewer and water company charges. I don't know the name of them or anything, but I don't ever remember even voting on it, so I'd like, I'd like to have Gary explain it. I don't want to put it on your shoulders.
Well, let's not forget, though, if we're going to go back and we're going to look at this, then that means we're going to go back to the oh-eight, oh-nine budget and reexamine that, because this is part of the oh-eight, oh-nine budget for this program, and everything is based off of this.
That's fine, and then we'd have.
So, we'd have to go back, so we'd have to schedule an extra meeting, which is fine, so we have the budget ready in time.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if we need an extra meeting, would we? It's just a matter of adjusting the budget, and we do that all the time. I mean, we add things to it all the time and take off things, so.
Mr. Wilson?
You know, we've gone over a lot of these numbers with Gary through the budget process to make sure that we get good numbers in there and everything. And this particular contract, in addition to the brush pickup contract that we let out, was part of the strategic plan that he presented to you a couple of months ago, and the council directed him to do. So, that's where this came from. This came out of the direction of the council, I believe, those executive session, to go forward with this. And so, that's why we built the budget the way we did with these provisions for the outsourcing. And I don't know if that.
I know, I understand what you're saying.
But that's why the budget was prepared and the budget was prepared.
But I'd like to take, I'd really like to go back with Gary and take another look at all of the stuff that he's outsourcing. So, I'd like to make a motion to table, till Gary's back here, so we can get the in-depth questions answered.
Before I ask for a second, Alderman Cadella?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry about that. Two things here, maybe three. First, kind of general, but it does specifically tie into this, Jeff. I know previously, when Mr. Williams was acting as manager, I've asked, when we get bids, that I, we get a bid analysis sheet, simple one-sheet, Excel spreadsheet, who was asked to bid, who returned a response, if there's a breakdown in their cost, how that lies. I know, I know the information obviously exists, otherwise Gary wouldn't have been able to put this together, and maybe this needs to be something that I ask to be put on a finance agenda at some point in the future, but I would, I would really like to see a bid analysis every time we go out to bid. Second, with regards to the cost for outsourcing, I know, you know, with respect to Alderman Shaki and his strong opinion on this, I know you've been, you've been verbal, it's, you've not thought it was a good idea to outsource as much as the direction we've been going in. And I do remember we had this conversation up here and did give staff direction, and normally, I like to try to stick with the direction I give, but I think something may have come up that might change my mind on even whether or not to proceed with this. And this kind of came from a conversation that Alderman Wesley and I had this week, as well as a couple of seminars that we both sat in in the last week or two. Something I'm going to be asking to be put on this committee's agenda, Emerald Ashbore has been found closer to Wooddale now. We may need monies that we didn't put aside to begin dealing with this problem this year. I'm a little concerned about locking ourselves into a contract with work that could be performed in-house. I know the direction was allow staff personnel more time to perform additional services, many of which I personally asked for, but I also know that in the oh-eight, oh-nine budget, we don't really have any place to begin dealing with the Emerald Ashbore. Once, you know, once again, I don't, I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench in it, but something we may need to think about.
Alderman Lewitin?
I just have a technical question. These people are not required to post the bond, but, I mean, I'm reading your memo of February nineteenth. The Public Act sixty-five, blah, 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 applies only to local improvements. Our opinion landscaping does not qualify under the definition of local improvements. Therefore, by having the contract to provide invoices on a monthly or completed basis, this negates the application for the Public Bond Act. But one of the rumors I've heard on the street is that whoever wins or gets the assignment still has to post a nine-thousand-dollar bond with the city. Is that, what's the validity in that statement I'm hearing?
I can't speak to any rumors or innuendos.
Well, you can speak to whether or not they have to post a bond, or they have to post a cash deposit with the city.
I don't believe so.
So, these people, or anybody who wins the bid, does not have to give any money to be held in security for the quality of work they do, to cover any deficiencies that you have to bring somebody else in to correct what they did wrong?
According to Bond Dixon, if that's what the memo says, that's what the memo says.
Well, then, there's some people who didn't bid on this just because they thought that they were going to have to post money with the city, and basically, some of the people said they didn't trust the people who were holding the money.
Once again, I don't know how you want me to respond to that.
I think you should make it more clear, because people who would have bid on it, people who would have bid on it, didn't bid on it because they were under the impression that Gary was going to be holding nine-thousand dollars of their money for three years, and they didn't want to bid.
I believe that was the original reason why we did not receive more bids back, and then when we rebid it, we took that requirement out.
Sometimes, when you take something out, you have to broadcast that something is out, not just quietly remove it. Anyway, I'm glad to bring it open and out, and I'm sure that whoever is concerned will be hearing this and may act accordingly in the future.
All right, we have a motion to tables, at the table of the council, Alderman Shaki. Do we have a second? Roll call.
Alderman Wesley? Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
That passes. Next item is report and recommendation, contract award, special service area number thirteen, Clefsted Lift Station. Mr. Murmice, anything on that?
I don't have anything extra to offer, other than what's in the memorandum. Once again, I think it's self-explanatory if you read.
So, I'd like to make a recommendation, or a motion, that the contract be awarded to John Neary Construction in the amount of four-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Do I have a second? On a question, Alderman Wesley?
I have one other question. The other thing, if you could drag Gary to send out, give us a copy of who bid, who put out for the bid for this, too.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, it's pretty hard read. I mean, it's pretty tiny in the back. I know it's in, you know, I know. Right there. What is that all? Is that all that put out, five bids?
That one, I can't speak to like I did the last one. There may, there may have been more than five, or it may just be those five.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I have no problem passing it, but again, I would like that. If you could, I don't mean, if you could ask Gary if we could, like John says, if we could have a list on how many bids went out, who got the bids, and go that way. I really do.
Well, we can, we can make that a policy for, you know, all the committees every time we go out for bids.
That's fine. I mean, yeah, that's for everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Cadella?
Let me just say that the last sheet of this packet satisfies that request that I just put forth. I mean, this is as comprehensive as a bid analysis as I need to see, because this isn't my business, you know, that of constructing or modifying lift stations. So, I see enough in here. I mean, I agree with Alderman Wesley that if there was anybody else that was asked to bid and didn't, that's good information, no for future, but basically, I'm pretty happy with the way this breakdown is presented.
Alderman Coles?
We also had Neary do a lot of work in the city. The street on Montclair and Aricoys, and I believe the street on Montrose, that was all done by Neary. They're a good outfit, and they stick on their back.
I have no problem.
All right.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Okay, next item is information-only, Stormwater Commission update. That was just recommending City Council to consider reconstruction of School Street. Next item, also information-only. When I thought on information-only, there's no questions. Questions? Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention that the Stormwater Management Commission has been pushing this for a number of years now, because we have an area that can be really nice for people to go out and walk, or bike, or whatever they want to do, but there's very little room for parking over there. When we finally had the county signs taken down that said, "Stay out, no admittance," and put the big, what do you call it, concentration camp fence up, they finally took that down, but the Stormwater Committee is, what they're trying to do here is make it more available for people, and that street is really bad, so what they're, they're at least looking right now for that gravel to be placed alongside the retention area so that cars can park there, and people can walk it, or jog it, or bike it, or anything else. I don't need, I don't know if staff needs a motion on that, or just what we need, but they'd like to see some movement. The Stormwater Management Committee would like to see some movement on that for this year, for this summer.
Mary Johnson?
Mr. Murmice, and I had a discussion on this this week. In addition to the Stormwater Committee, the library and the Park District are requesting action. I don't want to speak for Mr. Murmice, but I believe.
Yes, I'm currently in conversations with both the Library District and the Park District above. You know, you originally remember the School Street Pond Project. The Library District has also shown interest in sharing possibly some of the costs over there for the additional parking, so I'd like to touch base with them and then come up with some sort of intergovernmental agreement before we take any action as the council. So, we have all the taxing bodies on board with that area and what we want to do.
Would it be logical to have somebody from the Library and Park District meet with the Stormwater Commission, perhaps, and kind of exchange ideas and what each one would like to do as their part of it? You know, after, at the Stormwater Commission meeting? I don't know.
And don't forget, Streetscape is also interested in this, too.
And the Streets, somebody represented from Streetscape community as well.
So, I'm going to try to coordinate this whole thing.
Great.
It's a lot of parties involved, so.
I know, it's a lot, but thank you very much.
All right. Next item, information-only, potable water gallons build versus gallons purchased update. Jeff, do you have, I had a couple of questions before the meeting, I don't know.
Yeah, well, first off, these items, seven and eight, were accidentally left on the agenda. These items weren't supposed to be on the agenda. The informational items were supposed to be included in the packets, per council's recommendation, but not for discussion at the committee. They were for discussion with an individual member of staff outside of committee time to shorten the meetings, in addition to the seven PM start time. So, these items weren't even supposed to be on there, and I can't speak to item eight anyway, so we'd have to wait to talk to Gary about that, but these items won't be on the future anymore, anyway.
Okay. All right, so if anybody has any questions on this, we should speak to the Director of City Services, Mr. Holmes. I know there's a few questions, so we can probably clear those up. Next, items for future meetings, storm sewers detention ordinance revision. Items to be added, I guess, decision on two A, Emerald Ash, well, Emerald Ashbore, would that be on this committee, Public Works? And something else I, we need to add to this, I was, I know we're working on school, doing School Street for the 2010, I believe it's projected, not this coming season, but the following, or 2009. But I need to know where council sits on having staff engineer both School and Elmhurst, two streets at once. At least get them engineered. If we do one, we do one. Anything else to add? Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Aye.
I call the meeting to order of the Community and Economic Development Committee. We have the minutes to be approv, oh, I'm sorry, let it be shown that six of the eight council members are present, and that we're going to call for approval of the minutes. But before we do that, I wanted to ask Eileen, when you say a motion carried, why do you sometimes use the present tense, "motion carries," and sometimes use the past tense, "motion carried"? Doesn't have any particular legal meaning? Either one is correct? Okay. Does anybody have any changes they wish to make to the meeting minutes? And I make a motion that the minutes be approved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion so carried. Okay. Item four, report and recommendations, development concept for the Thorndale Corridor Western Access. We have a rare opportunity that happens maybe once in a lifetime in a city to have a major development. IDOT is going to make a western access to the O'Hare Airport, creating a traffic flow of enormous proportions to the north section of Wooddale. And Wooddale goes both north and south of that area, it's, so it's going through a large area of the town. And our opportunity is to try and develop a off-ramp, like a cloverleaf off-ramp, so that cars can come into Wooddale, because if they don't come into Wooddale, they'll go past Wooddale at sixty to seventy miles an hour, and we won't get any economic development from them. Also, we have to consider how we would do this. I mean, we have to have a vision of what we want. We have to be able to express the values that we have, and we have to allow a voice to all those who are concerned, who have property in the area, who have a life objective that they want for that area, to be able to voice their opinion in such a way that they are, their opinions are respected, and even when they're disagreed with, that our interpersonal relationships should still remain friendly and strong. I am proud to say that we have a memo here from Ross Clicker, who has developed a lot of time and personal sweat into developing ideas. It breaks down the following way, into four parts. Staff wants to ask us, the City Council, for a direction for the development that we want to see, that we want them to go after. Two, staff is asking council for direction on such issues as the redevelopment of the area. Three, staff desires to know if council wants to hire a master developer to develop a redevelopment concept for the city, for the northern portion going down Thorndale Road, and the land they're abating, they're contiguous to. And fourth, they want to know how much negotiation they should put forth while working with the Illinois Department of Transportation to secure an off-ramp, a cloverleaf, or other road accessibility, both in and out, for those wishing to stop in Wooddale, to shop, enjoy our amenities, visit council with us. I would like to say that, right now, the city is mirrored in indecision. We're indecisive on the railroad station development. We're indecisive on the Irving Park Road bypass. We are indecisive on a lot of land development, and I would like to say, our indecision is not based on disunity, but on economic and social beliefs that we all bring to the table. I think that with this development, it might be best to consider a master developer who can act as a unifying provider for all of the input, wishes, visions, values, and voice that the City Council members wish to bring into the final results. Having said that, we know that we're talking about a long-term commitment to a, to a final result, because it's going to take still years before the road is developed, any train access to it developed, getting sufficient land acquisition together for large parcels. But this time, I think we shouldn't get mirrored down in, in the fear of failure. I think we should get more involved in reaching for a higher plateau, and in so saying so, I think it's good to have a master developer. Now, I would like to say that I've looked at some plans that certain people have already brought forward, and none of them can be accomplished without a uniformity and a strong leadership. Now, I'm going to ask Ross to tell us about the opportunities that may be presented at the, at a conference that he is going to be attending soon, and I'm going to ask him to, even though I said all the things he said, I'm going to ask him to choose what he wants to concentrate on to develop at that, that convention that he's going to. Ross, I think I probably, I'm expecting an awful lot of you after what I said, so here's hoping that, that you are going to be living up to everything I said about you. Would you please take the floor?
Can I just ask one question? He ran off four. Is there another memo that I missed?
No.
No, if you'll read number three that he said, there are, two of them are conjoined in there, the ones about, about the cloverleaf and the one about the City Council's wishes for redevelopment.
Okay, I.
Thank you, Alderman Lewitin. Yeah, just kind of re-highlighting my memo in here just a little bit. We have an incredible opportunity placed before us with the Thorndale Road Corridor. We don't know what that corridor is going to look like yet.